Uh, Mr. Taylor, but he's remote.
Oh, okay.
He's remote. Um, are we ready?
Uh, yeah.
I've started the recording.
You've started the recording, okay.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take roll call.
Mr. Hilsinger.
Here.
Mr. Seed.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Bedell.
Here.
Mr. Lawler.
Here.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
That's a record show seven. Uh, first item is, uh, meeting minutes from the executive meeting of February fourteenth. We can take these together. Oh, we will do presentation.
Yeah, if you, if you'd like, I can do the presentation first.
Okay, we'll do that.
So I'm going to basically present some high level, uh, information about the planning commission, planning in St. Louis County, um, and then we'll walk through sort of a, an example staff report. So to start, you know, the planning department, we are the staff to the planning commission. So we, as we were, you know, we discussed, we prepare the and review applications for procedures that come before, uh, the planning commission. We write the staff reports. We follow petitions through the process and then, um, do site plan review basically on the commission's behalf. So all of this is under the, under the auspices of administering the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. So a lot of it is working with the applicants themselves, working with the commission, working with our elected officials to, you know, further the county's goals. And then the planning commission themselves, you are an advisory body to the county council. So everyone here was appointed by a county executive and confirmed, uh, by the county council and review all the matters, uh, planning and zoning matters on the council's behalf. So this is done through making recommendations to the council for, uh, changes in zoning. And then they have delegated the power to grant or deny conditional use permits to the planning commission. And then all of this is done, uh, to further the goals of the county's general plan. So the general plan is basically a guiding document that, um, lays out policy goals, land use goals for the county. So some of the responsibilities of, of a planning commissioner are to, you know, to be prepared, to read the packet, um, you know, visit the site if you can, get all of your information from the planning department or public hearings. Please don't go and, you know, try to get information from the petitioners themselves necessarily. Um, and then always, you know, being honest, being fair, being objective, um, and being ethical. So how does a commissioner do this? You know, we're looking at sites very specifically, but you can also try to think about the big picture. Uh, we try to lay out for the commission what your procedures are, what is before you, for you to take action on, um, generally staying informed and, and communicating with us and communicating with each other. So I'm going to talk about the different, uh, zoning districts we have in the zoning ordinance. So there are, uh, four categories, if you will, uh, one of them being sort of catch-all category. But the first I'm going to talk about are our residence districts. So we have several residence districts in the zoning ordinance, which are all, um, they were all instated to, to further the development of vit- vital, excuse me, uh, vibrant residential communities. So we have several, uh, residence districts. Each one has a number and then a square footage associated with that. The square footage or the acreage you see on the, on the chart is the minimum area required for one unit in that district. So in the R1 residence district, a single-family home has to be sited on a one-acre lot, while in the R5, that home only has to be on 6,000 square feet. So as the number of the residence district increases, the density also increases because that minimum lot size is coming down. So the types of residential development we have in St. Louis County are single-family detached homes, single-family attached homes, uh, townhomes and multiple-family apartment type, um, developments. And then we also have group living facilities of different sorts, nursing homes, um, group living for charitable purposes. So each residence district and each zoning district in the zoning ordinance has a list of uses that are permitted by right. If a use is permitted by right, that person doesn't have to come before the planning commission. They submit a site plan to the Department of Planning, they get their permits, their use is permitted. So in your R districts, that's usually a residence, you know, single-family homes, multiple-family depending on the district. But other uses that are permitted in the residence districts are places of worship, police and fire stations, libraries and schools, the type of community-oriented uses that are reasonable, um, in proximity to the, to homes themselves. An example of, excuse me. So that's what's permitted by right. Then every, uh, zoning district has conditional uses. Uses that we, as the county have determined, could be appropriate, but there is a factor about that use that requires an extra layer of scrutiny from this commission. So the sort of conditional uses in your R districts are childcare centers. Um, group living facilities are conditional and some of our lower intensity uses, uh, telecommunication towers, things that could be appropriate and could be necessary in residential districts, but either need the commission to determine if they're really appropriate or they're only appropriate under certain conditions of development. So one example of this that the commission may recall recently is, um, the Kim George petition. She requested a conditional use permit in an R district for a childcare center up on Parker Road. Um, she, she needed a conditional use to, to operate that childcare center. We also have one special procedure, um, aside from conditional uses in the, that can be utilized in the residence district. The PEU Planned Environment Unit Procedure is a voluntary procedure that a petitioner can request, um, for design flexibility and results in a site-specific ordinance that, that the county adopts to govern the permitted uses and the development of that site in perpetuity. So the, the flexibility comes in terms of the lot sizes or the setbacks or certain, um, aspects of the site maybe aren't agreeable toward your, to your, uh, standard subdivision development. Maybe there's a creek, maybe there's a bunch of topography. The PEU procedure allows the developer to request only the number of units that that residence district would permit, uh, by right, but in a different configuration. That way you can avoid the creek. You're still building the same number of units, but you're avoiding those natural features. So an example of this is, uh, one of the items on the commission's agenda tonight, oh six and oh seven twenty-three, which is a PEU in the R6 AA for a multiple-family, um, development. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. So then we'll go to the commercial districts. We have, uh, C1 through C8. You may notice there's no C5 in there. Um, we do have this range of commercial, uh, districts where similarly, as that number goes up, after the C, the intensity of the use is going up. So the C1 neighborhood shopping district is really intended to facilitate small businesses that might be appropriate at the end of your block. Whereas the C2 and the C3 shopping districts are our general shopping districts that you'll see along most of the commercial corridors in our jurisdiction. The C4 highway service commercial district is what it sounds like, located near our interstates and major, uh, commercial corridors to, uh, provide services that are needed to the traveling public. The C6 is specific for sort of, uh, it's the office and research service district. You'll see it around, um, hospitals sometimes and, and those sort of research-heavy uses. And then the C7 is the general extensive commercial district, which is the most intense commercial district that's almost light industrial, but is still a commercial district. Then we have the C8 planned commercial district, which again is a voluntary procedure that results in a site-specific ordinance that governs those uses. I'll come back to the C8, um, in a couple slides here. So in your commercial districts, just like the R districts, each one has a list of uses permitted by right and uses that are conditional. For instance, in your C2 shopping district, restaurants, offices, stores are permitted by right, but in the C2, um, fast food restaurants with a drive-through are conditional. Vehicle service, vehicle repair are conditional. Telecommunication towers are conditional at a certain height. That way the commission can decide whether or not the use is appropriate, and if it is, what conditions of development need to be instilled to ensure it is compatible. So some examples of this recently, um, the Vet Care Partner Petition on Telegraph Road, that was a conditional use permit for a veterinary clinic. Similarly, the recent Club Car Wash, also on Telegraph Road, um, was a conditional use permit in the C2 to permit a car wash. Last, uh, general zoning district type we have is the industrial district. We only have two straight districts that are industrial, if you will. Straight meaning they're not a planned district or a special procedure. So when we say straight zoned, that's just your pure C2, R5, no overlay, no special procedure. The M districts permit, you know, your general industrial uses. The M2 is just a little more limiting than the, excuse me, the M1 is a little more limiting than the M2. And then we have the M3 planned industrial district. In the industrial district, similarly, there are permitted uses and conditional uses because there are some uses that are just only appropriate under certain conditions of development. Um, the commission, uh, a CUP in an M district is, is on your agenda tonight, oh five twenty-three best detailing is a request for vehicle detailing, which in the M1 industrial district is a conditional use. So then coming back to our planned districts, we have the two main planned districts are the C8 planned commercial district and the M3 planned industrial district. And what the zoning ordinance says about both of these procedures is that they are intended to be utilized to establish either combinations of development or specific uses that the zoning ordinance doesn't allow for in the general commercial districts or for developments that are only appropriate under a specific, uh, site design. So the commission sees a lot of requests for C8 planned commercial districts. It is a very, a very frequently, uh, requested procedure because it does allow, um, that extra control and that extra scrutiny by the county, but does allow for flexibility on, on the, the site design and on the developer's part. Similarly with the M3, any, uh, any use in the M1 or the M2 can be requested in an M3 industrial district. Any questions or Jacob, anything you want to add? So then we have, um, special procedures. As I stated, each zoning district has a, as conditional uses, those uses are permitted with a conditional use permit. So the conditional use permit, um, and the planned environment unit procedure are the two most frequently requested special procedures that will come before the commission. But we also have, um, a special business permit. The commission actually saw one last year. The Gregory and Lois Mans request was a special business permit. Um, the zoning ordinance does include a density development procedure, which is for, um, residential developments. The commercial industrial design development procedure is a, um, kind of a mixed-use commercial industrial, uh, you know, combination development. And then the landmark and preservation area is for, um, more natural sort of quasi-institutional uses is what I've seen it for, but we don't see a lot of those. And then the other zoning districts we have, we have a floodplain overlay. So anywhere in the county that is, uh, 500-year floodplain or 100-year floodplain has a, a zoning overlay. Uh, we also have a park and scenic district where you'll see a lot of the county parks in our jurisdiction are, are encompassed in that district. The KP and the NU are, are non-urban districts. So all of the other zoning districts I've told you about are urban districts, whereas the NU is what it sounds like and the KP as well. These are the zoning districts where a lot of agricultural uses are encompassed. Um, they're, they're truly non-urban. There's no commercial uses permitted in the NU or the KP. And the KP specifically, um, is located in North County, um, to encompass the karst geology that we have up in North County, which is a soil type that is prone to sinkholes and, and caves. And so we've, I think in 2008, this, this zoning designation was introduced to protect those areas. And then last, we have a mixed-use development district, um, which is, you can see from the graphic, you have to have different percentages of different, uh, land use types. Any questions about zoning designation, zoning districts before we look at, at a staff report? Okay. So when a report is brought before the planning commission, it's first brought as the staff's recommendation. This is what we call the information report. So it's what we, as your staff, as professional planners, uh, think about the request. So it's us making our recommendation to you, and when you vote on that, you're, you're basically taking action on the request. Then you'll see the same petition again as a very similar-looking document usually that we call the letter of recommendation. That document is your recommendation to the county council. So if the staff recommends approval of, you know, PC 123 and the commission doesn't disagree at all, the only thing that might be different in the letter of recommendation is instead of saying the staff recommends, it'll say the commission recommends. If the commission doesn't agree with the staff recommendation in the information report, we write the letter of recommendation to reflect the commission's, um, recommendation. So, but generally the anatomy of the two documents is the same. So every report has a cover page. This is the cover page of an information report. This is all from the same report from 2021. The cover page tells you the request, the petition name, um, relevant dates, and then what's inside of the report, the attachments. And then we indicate on that cover page what the recommendation is and, and the summary of that recommendation. So you'll see, uh, attachment A, attachment B, attachment C, and attachment D. So remember those as we go through. We'll start with attachment A. Attachment A is the report. It includes, uh, the background, the request and the recommendation all in attachment A, but it starts with an area land use and zoning summary. In this part of the, of the report, we'll tell you what's on the site, what it's zoned, what it's developed with, and if it has any sort of, you know, huge topographical changes or anything worth noting, uh, that the commission needs to know. Then we will go through the, the land use and the zoning around the site to the northeast, south and west to give you context of the request. Oops. Then, um, every report indicates at the top of this page, you can see departmental and agency comments. We get, um, comments from MSD, Missouri Transportation and County Transportation that I will touch on, um, a little bit further. But the background of every report typically starts with what was this property zoned in 1965 when the zoning ordinance was adopted. So we'll start from 65 and talk about the site and the corridor or the area it's on, what it was in 1965, any zoning actions that have happened on the petition site since that time, and then relevant zoning actions in the surrounding area. Then we will reiterate the, the petitioner's request. At this time, when you've seen the info report, you've already gone to public hearing, you've seen their preliminary site plan and the petitioner's request generally, but for the record, we, we put it in the report as well, um, detailing what they said at public hearing, uh, how they described their site development plan and any other information they gave. Hours of operation, number of employees, this information's usually in the petitioner's request. Then we will also summarize, um, the public comment that happened at public hearing. How many people spoke in favor or opposition, generally what their, uh, concerns were about? And then we will indicate what that crowd count was, how many people in the audience indicated they were in favor or opposed to the request. And then the big chunk of the report is the analysis itself. So every analysis is essentially, is the request appropriate? But we break it down into, is the requested zoning designation appropriate? If you're going from residential to commercial, is commercial zoning at all even appropriate? So you'll start high. Then we'll go to, is, are the permitted uses in that zoning district appropriate? So maybe commercial zoning's appropriate, but are all of the permitted uses in the C3 shopping district appropriate? Then if it's a request for a specific proposed use, if they're asking for a conditional use permit, we'll, uh, you know, analyze, is that proposed use appropriate? And then we will go into the site design itself and, and basically pick that apart and, and determine if every aspect of the site design is appropriate or not. And this is whether it's appropriate at this location, if it's appropriate, um, if it's compatible with those surrounding land uses, and if it's within, you know, the county's goals as stated in the general plan or our community plans. And also in the analysis, we will lay out, um, any of the drafted conditions of development. If we wanted to limit the building size, we're not just going to put that in the conditions we draft. We, we're going to back that up in the analysis. So we'll say, this building shouldn't be taller than three stories because of this. And then you'll see that we, we echo that in the conditions of development. Do you have a question, Mr. Seed? Okay. I just caught your eye. I was just making sure you didn't have a question. So that's attachment A. Attachment A is the report. Then we'll have attachment B. When we send you the public hearing notice, we also send it to MSD, Missouri Transportation and County Transportation. They look at that site development plan and they say, okay, if you, the commission and the council approve this request, here are the conditions of development we would have. So for MSD, that's where they'll tell us if there are downstream or upstream issues that they note. If there are any sort of, uh, extensions of the public sewer that are going to be required, MSD will, will give us conditions that relate to, to their scope of work. Similarly, county and Missouri Transportation give us drafted conditions of development. Road improvements, they may require sidewalks, et cetera. So these are included, uh, as attachments in attachment B. And then they are also, um, brought into, to the conditions of development we draft. Which brings me to attachment C. Attachment C are the conditions of development. If, like, what, what's, what this, uh, request in this example information report, the petitioner was asking for a C8 planned commercial district to develop a car dealership. So attachment C starts with what is the permitted use? The permitted use is a car dealership. How big can it be? How tall can it be? And then, so that's the beginning of this attachment C. You can see number one permitted uses and then building requirements. Number three is just your sort of general submittal requirements, not what your setbacks are, but that your site plan has to show us setbacks. Then we go into site development design criteria. This is the bulk of where the commission's recommendation is reflected in an ordinance because attachment C is essentially, essentially copied and pasted into a bill by, by the county counselor to become legislation before the county council. So we have to lay everything out in attachment C, um, so that it can be legally enforceable in that governing ordinance. So going into the design criteria, that's where we put building setbacks, structure setbacks, parking setbacks. And continuing is where we list out those, uh, you know, vehicular access and road improvements. This could be road improvements, sidewalk, right-of-way dedication. We will also lay out lighting requirements. Every development requires a submission of a lighting plan and a landscaping plan. So if we have specific, specific conditions of development related to those two topics, they have a section in attachment C. Similarly, um, sign requirements. We lay out what sign rights we're recommending. Parking requirements is different from the vehicular access. Uh, vehicular access would be, you know, dedicate 20 feet of right-of-way, whereas the parking requirements are where we will say, um, you know, all parking lots have to be paved with asphalt or concrete. Concrete, uh, paving and curbing is, is what we will put in parking requirements. Then we'll have a miscellaneous requirement section. This is where, um, hours of operation are often found, uh, details about trash enclosures, equipment screening, et cetera. So that is the design criteria. That's sort of the bulk of, of, of what is required on the site development plan. The rest of the ordinance is a lot more procedural. Here's what's required in design criteria, and then the rest of the ordinance sort of lays out how it has to happen. So we have a traffic generation assessment for our planned districts. That is enforced through the governing ordinance. And then going on, there are things they have to do before the site development plan can even be approved. A developer has to, um, submit to MSD. They have to submit their stormwater plans and their sanitary plans before we can even approve their plan. If there's a geotechnical report or a geotechnical study, that has to occur before the plan can be approved. And then typically, um, for a C8, in this case, a site development plan, after the staff reviews it for completeness and the commission approves it, every site development plan for a planned district has to be recorded with a recorder of deeds. So we have to include that in the ordinance as well. Then we move on to, um, what has to be done before the developer can get a land disturbance permit, what they have to do before they can get a building permit, and what they have to do before they get an occupancy permit. Um, the, the planning department is involved in some of this work, but at this point it's sort of transitioning from the planning department to the Department of Public Works, um, as that site plan and permitting process continues. And then every report, uh, that requires the submission of a preliminary site development plan, that plan is then included as an attachment of the report. So attachment D for this report was their preliminary site development plan. And that's what I've got for our sort of introductory, uh, presentation. I know that's a lot of information, but once you see it applied, it's all going to make sense and we are here for you while you go through it. Are there any questions? And if you think of anything, you know, Jacob and I are just a phone call away.
I'd like to publicly welcome the two new members of the planning commission. Um, we are extremely excited to have two new voices on the commission, um, to have your expertise. Um, and I look forward to, and I know this commission work, forward, working together, um, as we put forward the goals of St. Louis County. So I'm, thank you for your willingness to serve our residents.
Okay.
Now, thank you. Fuck, we want to go on then? You, you ready to go on?
Yep.
Okay. Um, we'll go to number two A and two B, meeting minutes from executive February fourteenth and minutes from public hearing of February thirteenth, need a motion to accept. Accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. No one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero seventeen.
It's Mr. Taylor, yeah.
Can we put him on mute?
Hang on. We'll wait until we can.
Any keys, I'm just kidding.
So let the record show that Mr. Taylor is also in attendance with us this evening.
Okay, we have no status sheets, uh, no committee reports. So we'll go to the first item, new business, PC oh four dash twenty-three, Steve Young.
Good evening. Before you is PC oh four dash twenty-three, Steve Young, which was a request for a change of zoning from C2 to R7 for point five six acres located west side of New Hampshire Avenue, approximately 180 feet north of Grabway Road. This is coming before the commission tonight as a letter of recommendation. As you can see from the county context map, this site is located in South County and in the aerial, the site is outlined in red. Here is a larger view of that aerial with the site outlined in red. As you can see, it is just off of the commercial frontage of Grabway Road and surrounding it is single-family and some multifamily homes. This site, um, was and has been a legal non-conforming use since it was used and/or approved, um, as a multifamily residence prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1965. So staff is recommending approval of this request as the R7 residence district zoning is appropriate at this site and the R7 residence district zoning would bring the site into conformance and allow the site to be continued as a multifamily residential structure.
Uh, we need a motion. Discussion. Anyone? Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, eyes have it seven zero, and we're going to PC oh five dash twenty-three, Best Detailing LLC.
PC oh five dash twenty-three, Best Detailing LLC is a request for a conditional use permit in the M1 district for point eight three acres located on the south side of Trenton Avenue, approximately 200 feet east of Galt Industrial Boulevard. This also is coming before the commission tonight as a letter of recommendation. As you can see, this site is located in mid-county and the site is outlined in red on the aerial. Again, here's a larger aerial view for you all tonight with the site outlined in red. As you can see, this site is surrounded by office, warehouse, industrial-type uses. Staff is recommending a few site conditions based on the site development plan presented. Um, staff recommends no more than one service bay at this site. The hours of operation shall be limited from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, and no outdoor overnight storage of vehicles in excess of 72 hours shall be permitted on the site. Staff is recommending approval. The proposed vehicle service center, including vehicle detailing, is keeping with the character of the surrounding land uses and is, and is desirable in the proposed location. The proposed use would not be a detriment to the public health, safety or general welfare of of those in the surrounding areas, as the proposed use is a lower intensity than the general vehicle service center. A vehicle detailing in the M1 industrial district is consistent with good planning practices by co-locating the use with office warehouse developments. And the square footage of the requested use for this is minor compared to the overall size of the development. This is also as a letter of recommendation, yes.
Okay, we need a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. And last item under new is PC 06-23 and 07-23.
This is PC 6 and 7-23. As Meskovic has requested a rezoning from C8 commercial district to R6 AA residential district with a planned environmental unit, PEU, for a 1.32 acre tract located on the north side of Smythe Station Road, approximately 100 feet west of Smythe Mill Street Drive. Proposed, the purpose of this request is to construct multifamily residences on site, which is currently vacant. The site is outlawed, the cited, site is located in South County, and it is outlined in red in the aerial. As you can see, the site is located in a commercial cluster along the Smythe Station Road and is primarily surrounded by single-family houses. The preliminary site development plan presented at last public hearing on 13th February showed 19 multifamily residential units located in two-story buildings on the east and west ends of the property, with 44 parking spaces, landscaping, and an on-site stormwater retention basin. The petitioner stated that the target group of renters for these units are young professional, and average lease would be between $2,250 to $2,500 per unit. Meanwhile, the St. Louis County's Imagining Tomorrow 2013 Strategy Plan emphasizes the importance of having different housing choices to retain young professionals in the county, since the county is currently facing a challenge with its aging population. During the last public hearing, the residents of the immediate vicinity presented their concerns about the proposed development. To address these concerns, the developer and the planning department's staff had a post-public hearing meeting where the developer proposed designing and engineering solutions to address these concerns. The engineer highlighted that the existing square has the capacity of a 100-year 20-minute rain event without flooding water into adjoining property. The rooftop pipeline will direct stormwater to the on-site retention basin without discharging water to the neighboring property. Additionally, velocity-reducing turf mats are proposed to be installed in the east side, east setback to the, to reduce the velocity of the stormwater by 50%. To address safety concerns, new caution pedestrian crossing signage will be installed with a stripped crosswalk. A new six-feet-wide concrete sidewalk will be, will be constructed connecting the neighboring residences to the commercial district located in the west of the subject site. For privacy concerns, a proposed landscape, landscape plan outlines a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer between the sites and the single-family residential area. The cross-section profile of the proposed eastern building and the grading indicated that the top of the proposed eastern building and the immediate single-family houses are approximately two to four feet below the rooftops. In terms of parking, the proposed development provides 44 parking spaces exceeding the zoning ordinance requirements by 16 parking spaces. All proposed lighting is wall-mounted, and no lighting standards are proposed. No lighting will be projected onto the adjacent site. The petitioner indicated that they propose high-efficiency air conditioners, conditioning units, and noise screening around those units to minimize noise generation and projection onto the adjacent site. All development is subject to the Chapter 625 Noise Control Code of the County Revised Codes of Ordinances. The department recommends approval for this request since the proposed R6 AA residence district zoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning pattern along Smythe Station Road. The PEU, Planned Environmental Unit, affords design flexibility to the petitioner and allows for specific conditions of development to ensure the proposal is developed in a manner compatible with the surrounding land uses. And also, it offers the planning department more control over the site development and designing measures to ensure the quality of the life of the residents of the area. After consideration of the design and engineering measures presented during the public hearing and subsequent post-public hearing meeting with the developer, the department finds the proposed use of multifamily town, town home dwellings and accompanying design is compatible with the surrounding land uses and development pattern. Therefore, we recommend an approval of this request.
Um, we need a motion. Anyone?
So moved.
Okay, we have, first, we need a second.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
Okay, um, discussion.
Yes, I, I have a few questions going back to the public hearing. How they might have been addressed. One, is that, uh, parking, while it might meet, the county requirement. It really doesn't provide much for visitors to come there, because of the apartments. Accommodate one car. Except for those that have a garage, which is less than half, accommodates two. Is that correct?
Well, there are eight units that accommodate, you know, eight garages, so each garage can, can have a one car. But according to the zoning ordinance requirements, the parking, the proposed, you know, parking estimations do meet the required parking spaces. So it does not specifically mention that, like, any designing or, like, any criteria.
Because I think that out of residents, that their streets are full of parked cars. And where are these people going to park if they have a holiday celebration or something, and there's a number of people? Where, where are they going to park? Currently, in a condo or a villa environment, they actually designate additional parking provided. And I don't see that done here.
So the site development plan, the parking is shared amongst, for all the, all the, it's 44 spaces minus the eight, which is clearly in, in garages, but the remaining spaces are shared by anyone who comes to the site. That includes visitors and, and residents of the site.
Forty-four spaces additional?
Total. No, that's total. So it's, so there are 36, there are 36 exterior, and then there are eight garage spaces. For a grand total of 44.
And 28.
And 28 is what is required by ordinance. And the underlying, the underlying rationale for that is that not every unit actually has two vehicles. Some of these will be occupied. And, and we see this, this standard is applied to all multifamily development and unincorporated. That is the standard in our zoning ordinance, which is borne out by and large, in general, that when we use that, that one and a half, that one and a half number for the number of units, that generally is, that does generally provide enough parking is what we have seen in the past.
Anyone else, questions?
Yeah, I'm still confused on the parking. You're counting the garage as a parking space. What happens if someone blocks you in your garage?
Uh, that becomes, that becomes an enforcement and tow issue.
Now, that, that could be a big issue.
As a land use, I think the, you know, from our concern is that while that may be an issue, I think most people don't want to be towed. It's just, and I, so I don't have, you know, that's, that's kind of, you know, where we.
The other thing too is assuming that there will be units that don't have two vehicles, but yet they're gearing it toward professionals, which would lend you to believe that there would be the husband and wife, or whatever significant other, that they both are employed. They both, because, uh, public transportation's not big in that area? I'd say the chances are that their two vehicles per unit are better than they being one.
I can't, I, you know, I don't, no, and none of us have a crystal ball, you know, we, I don't know, none of us know exactly what will happen. I, you know, we just see in general, across, the standard across the county, 1.5 typically, you know, it ebbs and flows, of course. You know, as people come and go, there will be probably some singles, probably some married families. So, you know, as time, you know, as things go on, but, but the, the concern is noted, but, yeah. Correct. It does meet, it does meet the zoning requirements for multifamily.
She knows seven or eight spaces.
Correct. It, they have excess parking.
Jacob, this is Keith. I got just a quick question. The units, I don't remember the units that back up to the existing homes? Do those have patios?
Uh, Ashra, would you, would you flip to the, to the site plan? So I believe the ones that are closest to the homes actually do not. The ones that are adjacent to the commercial do have small outdoor patios, but the ones that are adjacent to the, to the existing single-family have a, don't, don't appear to have a patio. Is that correct?
The, they're, they do have a little.
I apologize, Mr. Taylor.
So when you, if you came out the back door, you know, your, your AC unit would be there. Oh, go back to that one.
I think I have it zoomed.
Okay, you can see. Right, so you can see where the AC units are, and then the concrete patio. And then there's still this 30, 20 feet for the landscape buffer.
Thank you, Mel. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to accept. What's that? And a second, so, um, do we need roll call?
Uh, if the, it's the.
Let's take a roll call on this one.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Elliott?
Dave.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
Mr. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed? Mr. Helsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham? Ms. Hart? And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Let the record show six in favor to oppose, and the motion carries. And we'll go on to, uh, old business, ready for action. PC 40-22, St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Good evening. PC 40-22, St. Louis County Planning Commission was the request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to regulations for car wash facilities. As you recall, at your February 14th executive meeting, the commission requested some additional maps showing one mile and one-half mile locational buffers around the existing car wash facilities. So that's what we've brought to you today. We have not made any changes to our staff information report at this time, but we can, based on what we present to you today, if that is the commission's will. So the first map here shows a one-mile buffer around existing car washes in the 6th County Council District. A one-mile buffer would preclude any new car washes from developing by right in this area. They would all either require a conditional use permit in the C2 commercial district, or conditional use permits in the C3 or C4, or a C8 planned commercial district. This map shows a half a mile buffer around those existing car washes. Again, there is minimal C3 zoning, zoned area available for developing a car wash by right. Any other car wash would need to be developed through the C8 planned district procedure or with a conditional use permit. And this is showing car wash facilities in unincorporated North County with a one-mile buffer around them, which does provide some area that's zoned C3, where a car wash could be developed by right under the recommendation of the planning department. And this shows a half a mile, which again shows some existing C3 zoned area. So the planning department's recommendation remains to, this is, this is, sorry, I apologize, I got ahead of myself. This is where car washes and vehicle detailing facilities are currently permitted. And the planning department's recommendation remains to allow vehicle wash facilities to be permitted in the C3 and C4, where a half-mile buffer is met, and conditional uses in the C3 and C4, where that half-mile buffer is not met. In the C2 and the C7, vehicle wash facilities for commercial vehicles be permitted in the M1 and M2, and conditional in the C4 and C7. And vehicle detailing facilities in the M1 and M2 be permitted by right, and conditional in the C2, C3, C4, and C7. So the department would note that, under this recommendation, PC 05-23 best detailing that you just took action on would not have required a conditional use permit, because vehicle detailing would be permitted by right in the M1. And then the locational buffer requirement, as written in the staff information report, is one-half mile in the C3 and C4 shopping districts to prevent a clustering of these uses along our commercial corridors. So the department is recommending approval. We find that it's appropriate for the commission to review regulations as they pertain to car washes and vehicle detailing facilities. And we are recommending that the commission adopt definitions for vehicle wash facilities and vehicle detailing facilities, and revise the permitted and conditional uses in the various zoning districts to reflect additional facility types. And we are recommending a half-mile buffer be met. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
We need a, of any kind? Second. Discussion.
Talked a little bit about, uh, the half-mile versus the mile.
Sure.
And, uh, I, I think what we've seen here is what exists today.
Correct.
That really includes some that are across the street from each other.
Right.
So the half-mile would eliminate those that are across the street. But if I just think about that telegraph corridor, I think some of us are familiar. It's, it's, um, three miles from, let's say, the last car wash out south, 270. And that would mean six of those according to that half-mile. Including the.
Bring up the maps.
Right. Doing mental math here.
Including the.
This is the half-a-mile buffer.
Right. And, and that includes the, uh, the six would include those that are car washes attached to filling stations.
Right. Yes.
So what this map is, is showing us is that even at a half-mile buffer, it's going to be essentially, if, if it was the, the desire of the commission to make this recommendation, and the council concurred with it. Essentially, at this point, particularly here in South County, essentially every car wash would become almost. County, essentially every car wash would become almost, even at the half mile, because we have so many of them, they would all come before the commission to ensure that they can be appropriately provided. So, yeah, in the future. Any of them that would come in the future. In North County, in unincorporated North County, there is still some, there's still some C three that is, you know, far enough from each other that, that there could be several sites in North County. But here in South County, it would be essentially every request, moving forward, would, would come before the commission for, for its review.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to accept. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. We've done the two letters for approval. Old business not ready. We'll go on to correspondence. First item, PC sixty-four dash eighty-six, Sun Tide.
Good evening. This is a correspondence item for PC sixty-four dash eighty-six, Sun Tide Inc. Currently, the site is zoned C eight planned commercial district for two point four five acres. It is located on the west side of Telegraph Road at Woodshire Drive, and this petitioner is requesting amendments to the C eight ordinance twelve thousand eight hundred twenty-two as amended. So first, the petitioner is requesting three different amendments be made to this ordinance. The first is to allow for three freestanding fast food buildings within the C eight. The second request is to allow for a digital monument entrance sign, and the third is for a parking reduction. The site is located in South County, and as you can see, it is outlined in red. Here's a preliminary site development plan now, just for the commissioners. North is to your right on the site. As you can see, located south, there's a freestanding fast food restaurant. There is also an existing multi-tenant retail offices to the west, as well as an existing stormwater detention basin. And then proposed building D, it would be seventeen hundred square feet, and proposed building A would be two thousand one hundred square feet. And then the little red line in the bottom, located along Telegraph to the east, would be where the digital monument sign would be. So at this time, staff is recommending approval with modifications. Currently, the, there are no tenants proposed for proposed building D or proposed building A. So staff is recommending approval, but at this time only with one additional freestanding fast food building with drive-through facilities. This would not preclude the petitioner from coming back for a subsequent request, asking for an additional fast food standalone building when a tenant is identified. We also are noting that building D is in a reasonable location on the site. However, there are concerns with the proposed location of proposed building A, because it shows six stacking spaces, and if two or three more cars were to join the queue line, you could see an issue with ingress from Telegraph Road. When it comes to the digital monument sign request, currently in the C eight ordinance, there is no sign regulations defining what signs should be allowed, which is why the petitioner wanted to get clarification from the commission on if they could have a digital monument sign in general. Staff? Staff is of the opinion that the digital monument entrance sign would be appropriate for the multiple tenants and businesses along Telegraph Road. And currently, there are three freestanding signs along Telegraph Road. We, we would suggest that it allows for no more than two freestanding signs along Telegraph Road, following with the C two shopping ordinance for signs. And then, as with the parking reduction request, if the commission is of the opinion that only one additional freestanding fast food restaurant should be built, and not all three on the C eight, the parking reduction would not be necessary at this time. However, if the petitioner is to come back asking for that third and final fast food restaurant at a later time, the parking reduction may need to be reconsidered at that time. Yes.
So the Taco Bell is there already?
Yes, that is already existing. And then the existing multi-tenant to the west is also staying.
And then at the northern portion, there had been a kind of oddly shaped office building that's since been demolished.
Yeah. Sure has. So this is part of Cockrake?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Currently, they're asking for two. And that's what you're proposing?
So what we're, so in the ordinance as is, it only allows for one freestanding fast food sign. They are coming forth to the commission asking for three freestanding fast food signs. So staff is recommending that only out of those three, two in general would be allowed on the site.
Mostly because, as Gretchen was saying, when you look at that building at the north, building A, the way the stacking lane wraps around it, it gets pretty close to that curb cut. So that's one of the reasons.
And with no tenants proposed at this time, we don't know, obviously, what the flow of traffic would be on the site.
Fast food restaurants?
Yes.
Right. These are kind of white box.
Yes, speculative designs at this point.
Certain fast food restaurants that give you more concern than others?
We always like to, when it's, when, as staff, we do like to know in general, because we do know that there are some fast foods that do generate higher traffic volumes, and I think some would be, you know, Starbucks is, is, you know, just throwing out, saying Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, you know, that do have a, a higher intensity just from, you know, just from what we've seen through development. So we really prefer to, we would love to see the tenants before it comes to the commission. However, we do find that giving them that flexibility for one additional restaurant can be reasonably cited on the site and give them that flexibility to market it, is, is one, is one of our rationales.
But not knowing the tenants, we don't know how much stacking is even going to be required for building D.
That is correct. And, yes.
There's no place to put it because the rest of the parking lot is parking.
Right. And that's why we were, we were concerned about the parking reduction that was requested based on speculative uses. And so, you know, we do find that giving them that flexibility of one additional, particularly if the design criteria inside of the C eight give them that flexibility so that they can cite the building appropriately to ensure that it does have enough stacking, you know, but at this point, without them having a tenant lined up, they don't have a, they don't have a hard site plan yet ready to, to.
And this amendment wouldn't necessarily permit just this configuration. If this text amendment were approved, and then they came to, to go through the site plan process, we would work with them to make sure that, that, you know, elongated stacking even for the building they do propose is reasonable.
Even though we would recommend.
If the commission recommended approval, they'd still have to submit a site plan for formal review. And during, during that process, is when we as a staff could, could work with them on the stacking for whatever building they do propose, ideally towards the center and not at that upper northeastern location.
Is that something that staff could work with them to show where that north building would ultimately go? Because I think you're very correct, and that will create a problem.
I think that's what we'll want. If this request went through, and then they came back, well, if.
Put a hold on it and let them take a look at it, see if it can be done.
And then to permit three fast food restaurants total?
No.
Yeah, I think just the one that we have now, and to go back.
That's, that's, yeah, we can certainly do that as well.
The, and just remind, because I don't have it in front of me, Mel, what are the setback, were there setback conditions for building D added to this?
No, that, no, the setbacks are.
Right. So that could be something that if, if the commission is generally, it generally finds the idea of having, you know, a, a, a building added, we can definitely put, you, you can choose to, to hold it, and we could go back to the petitioner and ask for some more setback requirements, and see if we can nail them down to the location. Yeah, because that would, that would, that would sort of box in where the location would be exactly on the site.
Anyone else? Hope we do have.
I, I don't think we have a motion.
I'd make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second for a hold? Any further discussion?
So a hold while staff goes and works with the petitioner on stacking?
And, and location of that north building?
Okay.
Seeing that all those in favor of a hold?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero.
Allo, are you going to vote? Abstain?
Abstain, okay. Let the record show seven zero one. And next item is correspondence, PC one oh eight dash ninety-four, Paul Cerami.
All right. Correspondence item for PC one oh eight dash ninety-four, Paul Cerami, is a current C eight planned commercial district for twelve point three five acres. It is located on the east side of New Hall's Ferry Road and the west side of Mel Road, north of Netherton Drive, and they are requesting amendments to the C eight ordinance seventeen thousand three hundred forty-two as amended. In particular, the petitioner is requesting relief from the limited hours of operation under the current C eight ordinance. This site is located in North County, and as you can see, the site is outlined in red. So on the preliminary site development plan, this site at one point was a former vehicle dealership and is currently vacant. The proposed use is for our CarMax inventory center. Unlike traditional car dealerships, the center would not conduct sales of motor vehicles to the general public. Instead, sales, auctions, and transfers of inventory are, are done or arranged on an invitation-only basis. So basically, this is a wholesale invitation-only site. The site development plan does show relocating and removing vehicle access drives along New Hall's Ferry Road as directed by MoDOT, adding to the existing fence on the site and adding Jersey barriers. Staff is recommending approval with modifications based on the preliminary site development plan. The first being that all vehicles, vehicle inventory shall be parked on pavement. This is in reference to, on the northern part of the site facing up, there is a grassy area with some gravel that at this time, the petitioner is recommending putting a fence around. However, if they do plan to extend their operations in the future, we would want to see that paved. The second modification is updating the landscaping requirements to meet the current standards set in the zoning ordinance. In the current C eight, they're just very out of date. Next would be decorative fencing along the western portion of the site facing New Hall's Ferry Road. This is just to improve the aesthetic along the streetscape of New Hall's Ferry Road. Also that any new freestanding signs be monument in style. This again is just mimicking what our current standards are in the zoning ordinance. Next would be no barbed wire fencing be permitted on the site. This is not typically, barbed wire is not typically permitted in commercial zonings anyway. The next would be the use of Jersey barriers or fence, for fencing shall be prohibited. We would rather see decorative fencing instead on the site instead of the Jersey barriers. And then, as they requested, and what they came here for, the hours of operation, the sale of motor vehicles would be changed to seven thirty AM to ten o'clock PM, service and body shop hours from seven thirty AM to six o'clock PM, and the public address system shall not operate past six o'clock PM.
And the one thing I want to add is that this request is to facilitate, facilitate the CarMax use of the site, but this C ordinance would still permit your traditional sort of vehicle dealership. So some of the conditions, you know, CarMax may not have a public address system. In the event this were a traditional sort of automobile dealership, again, we want those conditions still built into the ordinance.
Say, nail it, seven thirty to ten. Five days?
I think we wrote.
I think we put it for seven days a week.
Seven days?
Yes, sir.
Type of service and body?
My understanding was that it's kind of just getting the cars ready for the wholesale, nothing super hard industrial type situation. Um, Mel, I don't believe so.
Light service such as changing tires, that's the example they gave, was like just getting the cars ready for sale.
Suggest that, fix and fenders and painting.
That, that's not what they presented to us.
What does the, what do the current permitted uses state as the, as the ordinance reads?
Indoor and outdoor sale and storage of new and used motor vehicles with accessory, maintenance, service, repair, and storage of such vehicles and auto parts sales. So that was for the original dealership that was developed.
So they're not asking for a change in any of those uses? So read that, that accessory again.
Right. So with accessory, maintenance, service, repair, and storage of such vehicles and auto parts sales. So wouldn't, you know, they were, they were never permitted for, you know, regular repair.
Yeah, deep like wrecked cars coming. It was always repairs that a dealership would have come to it.
Selling or leasing this space to a new dealership or?
I beli-
I believe it's.
CarMax has purchased this site.
And it, everything would be invitation only.
So it'd be just CarMax.
Be inviting the general public at all onto the site.
Hey, anyone else? Comments? We need a motion of some kind. We have a second? Second it. First and a second discussion, anyone? Seeing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. We've got one site plan, PC eighty-eight dash ninety-four, South Town Investment.
This is PC eighty-eight dash ninety-four, South County Dodge Jeep Ram Site Development Plan. They are requesting twelve thousand five hundred square feet building addition and inventory parking for a tract of seven point nine two acres land located on the side of Lindbergh Boulevard, east of Union Road. The site is located in South County, and it is outlined in red. This is the site development plan. You can see they are demolishing existing building and construct seventy inventory parking spaces. In addition, they are proposing a new building addition to an existing building. The building addition would be twelve thousand five hundred square feet in extent, and they are providing five electric vehicle charging stations, some rolling gates, boards, and retaining wall. And this is the photometric plan, and this is the landscape plan. You can see there are some new landscaping proposed along the Lindbergh Boulevard.
Need a motion?
Oh, the elevations as well.
These are the architectural elevations.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight-zero. Anything good?
Yeah, so I just want to give the commission a little bit of update about our comprehensive plan and, and where we are. So we did have our mandatory pre-proposal meeting for our comprehensive plan. That was in February, February 8th?
I think so.
Yeah. So we have now, we are now waiting for proposals to come in. So we are waiting for proposals. They are due March 31st. So I am extremely excited, and really can't wait to see what, what we get in. So March 31st will be the day that we start receiving, or that we receive the proposals. So wanted to keep you all abreast of that, because you all will be critical partners and the critical entity to, to move that forward ultimately. And then Mel, do you want to bring up the Q2? Do you have the Q2 slide?
I forgot to put it on the slide.
Oh, okay.
But I've got it here in front of me. Basically, what we've set up is for the executive meeting to be the first Monday of the month, and the planning, or excuse me, the public hearing to typically be the third. What that does is, you know, that works for April, that works for May. In June, we do have a holiday, the third Monday, so it would shift the public hearing up. However, in April, right now, the way it would, way it falls would be the executive meeting on April 3rd. Jacob and I will both be out of town for the American Planning Association Conference. So if the commission is agreeable, we would like to scooch that to April the 10th for the executive meeting.
And subsequent to tonight, executive meetings, as long as, as the commission still concurs, will be conducted virtually, and, and public hearings will be in person, if, if the commission is still comfortable doing that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Other than that, the next meeting will be the March 20th public hearing.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I did want to, I had meant to do this at the beginning, but Jonathan Burford is the county councillor attorney who comes to our meetings. For the two of you who are new, Jonathan, Christopher, and Paula are our new planning commissioners. And then, since you're here, John Judd is here. This is Councilman Trakus's new legislative assistant, John Judd, for the 6th district. So a lot of the planning commission's work happens in District 6, so John will be following it all.
If Doug could be an animal, what animal would you choose to be?
If John or John?
It was like, we, so earlier, I, I, as a, as a ice-breaking question, we went around and I said, if you could be an animal, what would you be and why? So everyone in this room has answered that, except for you, John, and you, Jonathan. So Jonathan?
Oh, and Mr. Taylor too.
Taylor hasn't answered that as well.
Love that.
Buffalo.
That's a new one, we didn't hear that one.
There we go.
Love that.
They're, they're endangered species, they, people take care of them.
That's true.
National mammal.
There we go.
Sorry, I interrupted the adjournment.
Okay. Keith, you, you made the motion, right?
Yes, I did.
Hey, we have a second? Discussion, seeing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight-zero, and we're adjourned to March 20th.
See you later. Have a nice evening.